Good evening. This is Joseph Boteach and I'd like to call to order the February 6th, 2024 Rentham Select Board meeting. In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this public meeting of the Select Board shall be conducted remotely via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. And as a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Chair Joseph Boteach. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. At this time, I'd like to confirm access. So, members of the board, when I call your name, please state in the affirmative. Select Board Member Gallo.
Present.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Select Board Member Rose.
Present.
Great. Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Town Administrator Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Greg Enos.
Here.
And our Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo.
Present.
All right, and we also have with us this evening our Town Planner, Rachel Benson.
Here.
And we have our DPW Superintendent Brian Antonelli.
Present.
All right, we're going to open the meeting with the announcements on Tab 1, and I would ask our clerk, Select Board Member Harrington, to read those kindly.
Sarah. The announcements. Annual Town Election will be held on April 1st, 2024. Nomination papers for open positions are available in the Town Clerk's office and are due back Friday, February 12th, 2024. Voter registration for presidential primary election to be held on Friday, February 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Town Hall. State primary early voting will be held at Town Hall, February 24th through February 29th. See Town Clerk page for details. We're pleased to announce we're offering auto pay for real estate tax, personal property tax, excise tax, boat tax, and water transactions. 2024 dog licenses deadline is February 28th, 2024. Spring 2024 registration is open for Rentham Youth Baseball Softball Association. Registration available through Team Snap. Rentham Recreation is holding pickleball open play Thursday nights, February to March, at the Rentham Elementary School. For more information and registration can be found on the renthamma.myrec.com.
All right, thank you. And we had somebody by David Jacksmith who jumped on, put some profanity up on the chatroom and made some obscenities. You know, this is a serious meeting and that type of nonsense is uncalled for. So, thank you, Bill, for those announcements. At this time, we'll go to Tab 2. And the chair and attendant motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from January 16th, 2024.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Motion made by Selectman Gallo, seconded by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll go into a roll call vote. Selectman Boteach, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rose.
Rose, yes.
Okay, that passed. Kevin, can that person be blocked somehow?
You can't. Yeah, we're trying to take care of that.
You want us to give you a minute or should we continue?
I think the last one was removed. I think we can continue for now.
All right.
We can lock the meeting.
Um, I, it's Amanda. I enabled a waiting room, so now anybody else who tries to join the meeting will have to go into a waiting room. I don't think we can lock the meeting because it's a public meeting, so.
Thank you, Amanda.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So, Tab 2, let's jump over to Tab 3. And this is to sign the warrant for the presidential primaries, which will be held on March 5th, 2024. So, at this time, the chair and attendant motion to, to vote to sign the March 5th, 2024 presidential primary primary. What is this? Warrant, correct? Yeah. And it will require, yes, election warrant for 2024 presidential primary. And this document will require what signature? So, please stop by Town Hall at your earliest convenience to sign. Do I hear a motion to sign the warrant?
Harrington. Don't move.
Second, motion made by Selectman Harrington, seconded by Select Board Member Gallo. Any further discussion? Being none, go to roll call vote. Select Board Member Boteach, yes. Select Board Member Gallo?
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And Select Board Member Rose.
Yes.
All right. Let's jump over to Tab 4. And I know there's been some concerns brought to our attention in regards to speeding on West Street, and this is the section that goes from 121 into Bellingham, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Brian? All right. So, we have a letter, an email to Mr. Sweet, and I would ask if, it's from the neighbors in that area, I would ask that clerk read the letter into the record.
Yes, Mr. Chair. It's a letter dated August 9th, 2023. Or an email, I guess, dated August 9th, 2023. Hello, Mr. Sweet. I'm writing to notify you of an ongoing safety issue that we are all having out here on West Street from 121 all the way to Jenks Road in Rentham. The speed limit is 35 miles an hour, and unfortunately, the vehicles traveling on our road through our neighborhood are not adhering to that speed and have turned our street into a dangerous speedway with excessive speed and passing on double yellow lines. Would you like more speed limit signs posted, please, as coming from 121? There is one on the right, 35 mile an hour, and not another one until past the posted dangerous intersection at Spring Street. And on the way from Jenk Street to 121, there is one 35 mile an hour speed limit sign right past Jenks Road, and not another until about 1925 West Street, and no more all the way to 121. Between 1758 and 1800 West Street, there's a school bus stop for elementary and high school, and no bus stop sign is present. Between 1758 and 1800, there are a total of nine children. Please erect a school bus sign in that area. Please erect more speed limit signs and caution children signs along West Street. Currently, it's hazardous to wait for the school bus and get off the school bus. Check your mail, pull out of your driveway, and drive down West Street. We know personally, as our daughter and myself were hit by a speeding car and that sent us both to the hospital. Our daughter with leg injury and whiplash, myself with whiplash and permanent hearing loss. Please help us out here on West Street from 121 to Jenks Road with erecting the much-needed signs in addition to the speed limit sign that digitally shows the rate of speed like the one in Madison and in front of City Hall. The flow of traffic will realize the speeding will no longer be tolerated. Warm regards, Susan Nigerian and our neighbors.
All right. Thank you, Bill. So, we have with us our DPW Superintendent Brian and, and is Chief McGrath on? I know because the both of you has worked together on this. I don't see Chief McGrath. Brian, could you?
Chief's not on, but yeah, as you indicated, both the chief and DPW, Brian and his team have analyzed this and have made some recommendations.
All right. Brian, why don't you run us through your recommendations?
Okay. Yeah, I went out and there was definitely a, large sections of the road that did not have signs, and there were no poles, no nothing, so I don't think they ever had signs, quite frankly. So, I went out and I tried to gauge where the signs could be best be placed. I didn't want to put a million signs out there because sign pollution, you get too many signs, people stop looking at. So, I went out kind of based my locations based on the spatial difference between signs. I tried to not put them directly in front of people's homes because I've had complaints in the past. There's a sign in front of my house. So, the kind of in front of like, you know, a non-filled lot, town-owned lot where I could in front of an area with trees, so the houses don't look at the signs. I took all that into account. And I tried to get it equal the number of signs hanging either direction. So, that's basically how I chose where the signs would go.
Any questions for Brian? Select Board Member Gallo.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. I'm not a sign expert. I would trust that Chief McGrath and Brian, you know, would make the decisions. From listening, it sounds like they're educated ones and that makes sense. I'm always concerned about sign pollution, but I'm obviously more concerned about children and people getting hurt. The one question I have is, in addition to the 35 mile per hour signs, I think I recall in the, in the email that the resident asked about like a, a school, a children's sign or a school bus stop sign. Did you consider that? And do we not need that? Or what's the verdict on that?
Yeah, I, after discussing it and talking with other communities as well, bus stop signs, we don't have a whole lot of them out there. I think if we control the speed, that's a start. I think in terms of the bus stop sign, I think, I didn't, that didn't feel as necessary. It's pretty much a straightaway in that general area. And I think you can see the bus, you know, stopped up ahead, a reasonable distance away. If people don't, don't think my, my take on is accurate, I'm more than happy to revisit that. I just, I don't think the speed, I think the speed limit signs were more of a priority, to be honest with you. Um, and.
All right, and just to chime in on that, of being the husband of a school bus driver in Rentham, I spend my Labor Day weekend or the weekend before opening the school driving because the bus stops vary where they're going to be from year to year depending upon the youngest child usually gets priority that they migrate at that house. Depending upon the youngest child usually gets priority that they they migrate at that house. So to put a sign, it may change next year. So that would be a an obstacle with a school bus sign. Select board member Harrington.
This is chair. So a couple of questions, Brian. Uh, are these just um, stationary signs or stagnant signs? Or do you have the the um, solar powered lights that are gonna, you know, flash the, you know, speed limit? Uh, and that second comment is, um, if you've got nine, uh, I think the letter indicated that there's currently nine uh, elementary students in the area and high school kids. My assumption is that um, a- a- and at the will of the board, I'd like to see a school bus sign posted where that bus stops. Uh, there's nine kids going there now. They're gonna be there for a few years and it push come to shove, if we have to move in a year or two or or less, um, the kids should have a bus sign on each side of the road indicating there's a bus stop. That's all I got.
Um, to answer your que- your first question, uh, they're they're, no, they're just regular, um, regular stop, uh, thirty five mile an hour signs. Um, the cost of the flashing signs is um, pretty shocking. Uh, we're talking the flashing stop signs with the, you know, with the lights around them. I think the last ones I got, which I still on back order. Um, were, I want to say thirty five hundred bucks a sign. Um, and and if if you're talking about just like a standalone sign, this is your speed. Um, I did not, I did not look into those. Also, there's a cost with that, obviously. Um, but I, I I again, I think between the speed limit sign, just having enough signage period. So people know the speed limit is and um, you know, as the police do now enforcement when when need be, I think that will handle the problem. Um, and a cost, I mean, I might try to put a price on safety. Uh, but everything does have a cost and my budget is.
My suggestion would be that, you know, you you go with the the, you know, the the uh, stationary signs, if you will, and if things don't improve, um, then, you know, whatever the signs cost, we should look at the I mean, the cost of one sign or two signs that are gonna illuminate. Um, versus, you know, someone else getting hit is is, oh, you know, it does outweigh the cost of a sign by any wild stretch of the imagination.
Sure, I mean, yeah, we can absolutely revisit it. This is just, uh, this, I thought this was a good place to start and see what it does.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Mr. Chair, anyone else on the board, uh, think about the the school bus sign?
Um, for me, as a resident of Jenk Street who walks frequently up West Street, I certainly know the need for speed limit signs. Um, I think the school bus from what I see in the morning with the elementary students, it's more each homes, right, that that students are standing at. It's not one central bus stop that would where it all congregate. It's individual homes that the bus is stopping along West Street.
Yeah, I would, I would also group that on Summer Street. It's the same thing. They stop where the, they typically stop where the kids get off, where they live.
Would that be a lot of signs?
That'd be a lot of, that'd be sign pollution. So I think, I think it's a great idea, Bill. I think, um, I think we should, you know, my opinion would be start with this and see to your point how it goes and then revisit as needed.
Um, Brian, I have a follow up question. The lighted signs at that intersection, Ash Street, Spring Street, dangerous intersection, they haven't been blinking. Um, is there a reason for that? Because I know you put the guardrails up, which is great, since the accidents there is out are outrageous. Um, but the, but I I've noticed that they're, you know, they're not blinking. Is there reason why they're not working?
Um, we'll have to look into it. I didn't have reports of them not working. I know the stop signs are on back order.
So there's two, I believe there's two dangerous intersections. So if I'm coming one twenty one towards Jenk Street, right, and then the other way, and I even made note today. Um, and I did not see them blinking. So if you could check those out, that would be great. Um.
Sure, I mean, it could be, the batteries could be dying. Yeah, itself. I know one of them, since the day it went in, it's been very sporadic. It'll work and it won't and it will. Um, for the cost, they're not the greatest signs in the world, but um, that's what we have. So we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Um, and I I'd be happy to see more s- speed limit signs. Again, I walk that street frequently and have to throw my hand out or arm out to get people to slow down. I think that, and when Chief McGrath, you know, hears this and um, more presence, right, with speed traps, I think is going to be helpful as well. Um, yes, I, you know, I know that a lot of the neighbors will will get, may get pulled over and so forth, but still, I think that there are a lot of individuals from Rhode Island and other areas that are using that as a cross, certainly in the morning commute and throughout the day that are speeding and not and not just those other states, but it is heavily trafficked and they're speeding. Um, and a sign might not deter them, but you know, noting that their police there pulling over might be helpful.
Mr. Chair, I was just gonna comment, um, before that discussion that the chief has added targeted enforcement. Um, you know, for traffic enforcement and speeding enforcement to that area, um, and we've had that discussion and conversation with them. So they are trying to add that um, into more of a proactive, uh, particularly down in that area, and we'll be sure to uh, reiterate that as well. With regards to that fast, that flashing issue, and and Brian and I actually discussed this. I know our highway division manager, when I looked at the one at the end of Ash Street, it's just been a little more problematic. And I think that one, Brian, I think was maybe the one that was on the list for replacement. Um, just the back order issue of trying to get it. So there at least the one that has been um, hit or miss um, with it working and not working. And and Brian and I discussed that actually, uh, you know, a a little while ago, um, about trying to get that replaced.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, so we have a uh, somebody in the group. Uh, this says Leonard that would like to speak. Uh, could you if you just state your name and your address?
Uh, yes, my name is Cherie Leonard, and I live at nineteen ninety six West Street in Rentham. And um, I've lived here over fifty years in the same house at the intersection of Spring and Ash. And um, first of all, I did email Brian after the most recent accident and asked him to have the staff come down and look at the dangerous intersection lights and also uh, to check on the two stop sign lights, which his DPW staff did come down and look at them. Um, and that's correct. They're not repaired or whatever the plan was. I don't know. Um, and then with the replacement of the guardrail, they did put in a permanent stop sign because that one that they put in, which was temporary, got knocked over. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to address about the signs is one of the important things about having the signs is the, and I'm I'm happy to do this down here, but not throughout the town, is that a lot of times the signs are not visible to the drivers because of the brush and the tree overhang once spring and summer come. And you can drive along and then all of a sudden, you know, you're two feet in front of this sign and there it is. And I live down here, so I know what the speed limit is and I know where the signs are, but people who don't drive this road a lot, they don't see that. So that's an issue ongoing throughout town. Um, I'm perfectly happy living down here and driving on these roads just to send an email to Brian and say the shrubs in front of this sign, you can't see it. Could someone come down and clip it? But uh, uh, because I don't expect you guys to drive around town looking for that every two minutes, but I just wanted you to know that I think that that's a big issue and that's just ongoing. And that's, that's really all. I I I really don't have any complaints. I think you do the best job that you can.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments and and yeah, you know, any information the public can give us in regards to vegetation, overgrowth, things of that nature is very helpful because we do have ninety six miles of roads and the uh, the DPW does do a great job on a limited staff to try to address everything. And input from the community is always helpful. So we thank you. Is there anything else on this? Do we need to vote these signs, Kevin?
Yeah, if you could just vote, uh, to approve the listing, we can, um, DPW work.
So the chair made a motion to approve the installation of speed limit signs as indicated in the list provided by the director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Is a emotion was made by selectman Gallo, seconded by selectman Harrington. Any further discussion being none will go to a roll call vote. Select board member Botash, yes. Select board member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select board member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
And select board member Rose.
Rose, yes.
Excellent. That passed four zero. Thank you, everybody. Uh, please stay on because we're going to our next item, which is tab five, and I'm gonna turn the 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 uh, the floor over to our director of planning, the community development, economic development, and all the other titles she carries, uh, Rachel Benson. Welcome, Rachel.
Hi, how is everybody doing tonight? Wonderful. Awesome. Well, so I am here tonight to um, talk about the MBTA communities, uh, the bylaw, um, that's in front of the public hearing is tomorrow night with the planning board. Um, I know it's been a while since we first presented on this. Uh, I think at that time, the regulations that the state was still working, still working on, they were in draft form. So, but now, you know, two years later, the state has, uh, you know, finalized those. So I do have a presentation. Um, I can see if I can do that. All right, let's see. I'm gonna first try it here and then ask to share my screen. Okay, let's see. Always this presentation view. Not that one, that's the one. All right. So multifamily zoning for Rentham. I thought I had it, but I didn't, guys.
We could see it.
All right, do it the old fashioned way. Okay, so just a little bit, are you seeing in introduction?
Yeah.
Presentation overview. Awesome. All right, this is going good already, guys. All right, so just a little bit introduction, you know, what it is an MBTA community? Why was Rentham designated? What are the compliance requirements? Where are we proposing those locations? What is the density? What do we do if we don't want to comply? FYI, you can't really not. Um, just some clarifications and next steps. I'd like to get through my presentation and then we can take questions at the end if the board select one wants to. So as part of the economic uh, bond bill that was passed in twenty twenty, uh, the town of Rentham, along with one hundred and seventy seven other communities, were designated as an MBTA community. And so what that means is, you know, we have to zone for fifty acres near an existing downtown or village center and allow multifamily housing by right without age restriction, suitable for families with a gross density of fifteen units per acre um, and a unit capacity of seven hundred and fifty units. This is not a production mandate, though, so we do not have to, these units don't ever have to be built. Um, and it's also not related to chapter forty B, which is, you know, affordability. Um, so over the past year, I've worked with some of you on the board, as well as the planning board and consultants to identify areas that meet the state's uh, compliance model. Um, the deadline for Rentham to adopt it is in December of twenty twenty four, this year. And if we don't comply, we'll be ineligible for grants and loss of points for other competitive grant programs. As well as the attorney general, um, will, has stated that failure to comply will result in civil enforcement action. So this is just a little bit of the law and where we Rentham sort of um, fits in, we're defined as a other community served under section one of chapter one sixty one A, and those are just some other communities, our neighbors that are also designated in this one. Also, as part of this, hundred and seventy municipalities, um, were given different levels of what you have to do to comply. We Rentham was identified as an adjacent community because we don't have any transit stations within our borders or within a half mile of our border, but a lot of the communities around us, adjacent to us, have MBTA stations such as Norfolk, Franklin, and now Foxborough most recently. And this is just a little colored map of all the different designations, levels, and then the circle where we are. Um, along with why were we? And then this is also just a little bit more what was included in this chapter three fifty eight, um, acts of twenty twenty. Um, so the housing choice reform, some money for transit oriented development, neighborhood civilization. Um, but the housing choice zoning reforms is where we were, um, put in there. And so again, it's just changing sections of chapter forty eight, which is the zoning act, um, and allowing, you know, for these definition of MBTA communities and requiring uh, multifamily housing as of right and plus other requirements. And just an overview of the actual text of the law, if you want to read that through, this is a, just reiterating, MBTA community has to have at least one district of reasonable size that allows multifamily housing as of right and be suitable for um, families with children, no age restrictions. Density of fifteen units per acre, um, that's also doesn't usurp the wetlands protection or Title V. Um, and then again, adjacent communities, we have some other requirements for locations that we have to adhere to. And so just some of the examples of if we fail to comply, housing choice, we won't be, that was a grant that we just used, um, to do a downtown wastewater treatment facility feasibility study. Um, the local capital, um, projects fund, that's is ten percent of that money that comes in through that. I think it's gaming, um, is a subsidy to housing authorities. Uh, Mass Works Infrastructure Program, which I think the last time Rentham had that was the two point two million for the Route One Water Line. And as I said before, uh, the state has included, um, non-compliance, uh, with this MBTA communities um, as a loss of points and other very competitive grant programs. So what is this reasonable size? Reasonable size for most communities is fifty contiguous acres. They have now sort of said that your largest, you can have separate districts. One of them has to be twenty five acres and the smallest can be five. What is multifamily housing? What do they sort of define that as? A building with three or more residential dwelling units or two buildings on the same lot with more than one residential use, um, built, sorry, dwelling in each unit. Um, as of right, it just means that can, as long as that project meets the on the zoning, then it can go through. Um, right now, we have it as a site plan approval, so the planning board will still get to look at it. However, it's not, it's nothing that they can really deny. Um, and then housing suitable for families. So it just means that you can't, um, you know, set a bedroom size or number of bedrooms on there, um, or a number of occupants. And so for what we're proposing for the June, um, amendment, everything pretty much matches up with uh, the chapter forty eight. Actually, you know, it does match up for for that. So allows multifamily housing as of right with a site plan review. Um, so the planning board will still get some stay in like aesthetics, um, you know, lighting, some parking. We've put two, um, proposed locations and the board can decide which one. Um, either way, it's a gross density of two locations, uh, fifteen units per acre, no j- no age restriction, no maximum bedroom size or counts. Um, and their two districts are the downtown and Wampum area. They're both near existing, uh, downtown infrastructure. And so what is an adjacent community? I think I already went over this, so I won't go over it again. Um, but so because we don't have an MBTA station, that means we have to put this, locate this zoning in areas that have, you know, reasonable access to um, transit if we have any, or existing street patterns. Um, or areas that are already in existing downtown center. So that's where these were all the areas that we sort of looked at, um, throughout this year process. Um, and we've gone through and sort of, as we went, ran these through the state's compliance model, some of them fell off and didn't match. And so they've moved through. I've had some slides that showed that. So the proposed two locations, one is downtown. Again, it meets the adjacent community requirement. It's in our downtown, existing downtown, um, and the Village Zone B language, the existing language already pretty much matches the state requirements. Um, for this one, we we reduced the units to eight per acre because that was similar to what, um, we've had a proposal of a project, um, come in, and that's kind of what's been comfortable with, um, these working groups with the planning board. These working groups with the planning board has seen. So we didn't want to do anything more than that. And then the only thing we would have to change is adding the mandatory mixed use in that, which isn't. Standard in the state. And then the Wampum 495 area. There's a couple existing multifamily. Developments over here, probably about 16. Units. I think there's another one as well. And it's close to 495. Easy commuter, you know, get hop on the highway and get to the commuter rail. Also near Wampum Corner, which is an existing, you know, well, albeit small, but you know, downtown business district. 22 units per acre, 25% lock coverage. And again, this is just an overlay zone. It doesn't affect. If somebody wants to come in and do a single family subdivision, they can still do that. If somebody wants to just build one house, they can still do that. This is just another option for them if somebody wants to come in and develop. So these are some of the ruled out locations. First, this is the Rantham Development Center. Publicly owned land is defined as excluded under the state's guidelines. And if you're going to use it, it needs prior state approval, as well as be included on your housing production plan. Rantham's housing production plan, it was before it was called that, is now was expired in 2010. So that is out. The Beach Street in Higopian, there's another project being proposed here, but there's a lot, it's a very sensitive area with. Wetlands and yeah, there's, so there wouldn't, we wouldn't have been able to make that unit count here either. And it's not really near any existing downtown or any. Sidewalks, infrastructure. You know, not really a place good for families. Well, people do live on this street, so it is obviously good for families, but. Green Street, this is commercially zoned. Didn't think this was appropriate to put a residential on a commercial zone where we're a split tax rate town. It's also not consistent with, you know, existing uses in that area. Well, you'll get further down. On this road, you'll see some, you know, single family homes. Something of that size probably wouldn't fit in that area. It's also not near any downtown. Village center, I guess you could say the outlets, but. I walk in this, I live in this area and it's, walking is not very fun down here. And again, Eagle Brook, it was just very, it was, you couldn't make the model work with all of these small lots out here and. So we couldn't get that density on this one. And this was. That's last one. Chestnut Street, this was something somebody had come in and looked at. Again, there's a lot of slopes back here. It's not in a really. Good area, you know, A and R lots back here, all single family homes. Not really good infrastructure. And again, this is another one where it's commercially zoned Route One. There's not really anything. In here, you know, for amenities, I would say, or infrastructure as well. So now what are we, what is this going to look like? Trust me, guys, it's 12 minutes in. So as part of this MBTA communities, each multifamily zoning district must satisfy both the unit capacity as well and the gross density. And what are both of those? Saying a lot of words right now. So a unit capacity is. Taking a lot. And pretending it's not developed. So even if it is developed, what could that, if it's. Where just the model just runs it as if there's nothing on it. And what could that lot handle? And so that's how you get your unit capacity, your unit capacity. Rantham, again, is, we have to have 750 or the zoning has to create. Be able to handle 750 units. And then gross density, this is about the whole district. It's not just each lot, which here, you know, as it explains. That's net density. So it takes the whole district. And the average of that has to be 15 units per acre. So you could have. Less dense, more dense, so long as both of those districts. Average out to be 15 units per acre. So you can see here. If the town wanted to do both downtown and Wampum, 822, 30 divided by two, 15. It's 15 units per acre. And so here's just some examples of what 15 units per acre could look like. This is the Avalon in Sudbury. Again, 15 units per acre. Total of 250 units, it was 17 acres, I think. This is part of a larger. Multi-phase project too. Has some, I think, assisted living in it, some commercial as well. The park at Medfield, this is a little bit closer. Again, 15 units per acre, 92, six. These were, these, both of those two were built under the 40B, but that's the closest thing I could find. And then Grant Place in Natick, this one actually used some existing buildings in the area. But this is 20 units per acre, so that's getting a little bit closer to what the Wampum would be. And then this was the proposed downtown development. This is unapproved. This is just what. The developers sort of been reviewing with the planning board and the board of selectmen. Very early stages. And this is with the underlying zoning. So the Village Zone B already allows this development. And so what if we don't comply? So if. DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, it's now called Housing in Livable Communities. Determines that an MBTA community is not in compliance with this. We will not be eligible for funds. And again, from the. Those three or four. Grants, but the state has also included noncompliance as a consideration in many other competitive grants. As well, where. MVP is one of them where it's a very competitive program and in the past, we have. Lost out by one or two points. So. And the attorney general has already issued a statement that clarifies those communities who choose not to comply will be subject to civil enforcement action. And so this is just an excerpt from that. And again, when these PDF, when I PDF this, but you can select the link and you can go on there and read the full statement. So these are just, again, some of the other grant programs that the state is now considering compliance in. So those are a lot of grants that. I've, I've used and. The town could use as well in furthering its master plan and then other. Projects as well. And then again, you can read when I put this up on the website, you can go ahead and you can read through those articles as well. So again, just to reiterate, this is not, it's not requiring us to build these. It's only requiring us to zone 50 acres. It's not going to compel us to design or pay for infrastructure to accommodate these future projects. It doesn't mean that the districts have to have a uniform density. So again, as I said, we've got proposing eight on the downtown, 22 in Wampum or. That can change, just so long as the average is 15 units per acre. It doesn't supersede Mass, the Wetlands Protection Act, nor Title V. You still have to adhere to those. And it does not allow. Municipalities to get a waiver or an exemption from the requirements. What they're trying to do is just remove the barriers through zoning to allow for housing. Because housing is in a short supply around the Commonwealth. And so we may not see development for years, as you know, I'm sure you've seen multiple things on the planning board's agendas that have been on there for a while. It takes a while to develop. Things and projects of this size. And a lot of communities are actually doing the work. They're actually, you know, adhering to these regulations. But, you know, some press coverage has led us to sort of believe that that's not happening. And the capacity analysis is conducted by us and doesn't mean that the production has to happen. So again, that goes to my earlier one. Just some links. I have the draft zoning amendment on the webpage. There, submit your, you know, take a look at it, submit your comments to planning@rentham.gov. And the planning board will review those. And we may make, they may make changes during, excuse me, the public hearing process. But again, any changes that are made will be up on that website. And after that, the zoning. Board will submit their recommendations, which gets sent to town meeting. And then the article would hopefully be placed on the warrant for the June town meeting. And then once the article passes, the bylaw is then submitted to the state attorney general for review and approval, and then DHCD. For compliance. And so I also have some resources here. And then, let's see, I will stop share. And I think that's the end of my slideshow. Sorry, guys, 17 minutes. I try and be quick.
All right, thank you. I, I just, I want to thank you for the time and effort put into this. And, and I know my comments may not. Be harmonious to what your presentation is. But I just ask you, I have to do as I feel is right. I don't think anybody who lives in Rantham. Who moved here like I did 34 years ago. Were. You know, looking to come to a community that had ties to the MBTA. We came for what Rantham had to offer. The charm, the, the open space, the schools. And, and you know, the state has come to us on many occasions. We just went through a grueling exercise with the master plan. To talk to our residents, what they want. And I don't recall anybody asking for this. There was asks, asks for affordable housing. What I mean by affordable is not. Low income, but housing that. Our kids could stay in the community and live here because currently we don't have anything. When this first came to us, we wrote a letter saying we weren't going to comply. I still feel the same way. When it goes to town meeting. As it's presented, unless I see anything different, I will get on the floor. And tell the people not to vote for this. Because I feel it's not right. It's, it's a mandate that. Does not comply for what Rantham is all about. And for them, because we have a commuter rail in our next community, we could, we could have had the commuter rail in our town, but the residents chose not to. I, I feel that we need to fight the fight. I know you say it's, it's, it's an unwinnable fight, but the town of Holden just won. Milton is going to a vote next week. If you Google this, there is a lot of people out there fighting this, more than that are complying with it. We, we have the point at Rantham. 16% vacancy there, which. You know, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a lot, but it's 16% vacancy. So we don't have a full apartment complex. I am on board with what's proposed for a Village B. I think that's a well thought out development, but that's enough. I don't think we need to do more and I don't want to see more and I'm willing to stand up. And say to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That I'm not going to comply with this and they can do what they want. But I think for them to come down and tell us that we have to comply because we have an MBTA in our neighboring community is not right. That's just the way I feel. I'll open the floor for the rest of the board members. Select board member Gallo.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you for that. I, I agree with your sentiments. I appreciate Rachel's effort. And I appreciate the hard work into it, but this, let's call this what this is, in my humble opinion. This is an unfunded mandate. They're not saying to us, hey, we want to work with you on housing and we're going to, we're going to pay for, you know, sewerage for downtown. We're going to pay for, you know. The additional police officers, EMS, DPW, wells, infrastructure, roads, you know, they're not offering us anything. They're saying, do this. Or we're going to take things away from you. So I, I think that's an unfunded mandate. A few of the major points for me that are concerning is. We, I heard this a few times now that the units never have to be built. Well, that's, that's ridiculous. If I'm a developer. And I have zoning. And I happen to be in real estate for a living. And I have zoning that says you can build a single family house or you can build 15 units per acre. What do you think the developer is going to do? And at that point, they don't even need to go through the planning board. Rachel just said that. All they have to do is have the planning board review the, the, the site plan. But the planning board has no authority at that point. So we're giving up. All of our voting, all of our authority, all of the, you mentioned the master plan. Why the hell did we spend all this money? And time on a master plan? When the master plan just went out the window? Because this is not what the residents asked for. So I staunchly have major, I have major issues with this. The, the development downtown that has gotten good support. Is eight units an acre. Eight units an acre. What we're saying is that developer, if this zoning passed. Could literally come to us and say, hey, guys, guess what? I changed my mind. We're now going to double the size of that development and put 15 units an acre. And they would be able to do it. So we have major, I have personally have major issues with this. I think, again. We need to push back and I think all of the communities in the Commonwealth need to push back. And see what we can accomplish together, united. But I will say this. I do think we have to start having worst case scenario conversations. So that if we do try to push back. And fight and lose. We have contingency plans in place. But I 100% am against this. It's, you know, didn't we just vote a town meeting overwhelmingly that we thought the power should stay with the people? The residents should control what happens in our community. This makes that look like, this is way bigger than that. So again, my humble opinion, I'm sorry if I'm upsetting anyone. This is how I feel. I'm not speaking for the board, but I have major issues with this. And with that, I digress, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, select board member Gallo. Select board member Harrington.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so. And I have mixed feelings about this. The downtown development is going to be a similarly large project. I don't, I don't think as a community, we want to block. Families from moving to our town. If we have the ability to allow denser population. Nobody's going to come in and say, we're going to do this. We can still control what it looks like. I, I don't like the idea of the. State mandating the issue, but it's. Done correctly. I don't think it's the worst thing in the world and I think we need to have a lot more discussion than this. Wonderful presentation that Rachel put on prior to making a decision on it. That's it for now.
Thank you, Bill. Select board member Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rachel, thank you for your presentation. I also have very, very strong opinion about this proposal. I am not in support of it. I have a couple of concerns. First of all, they're. Dictating what we have to do in the town without doing any sort of studies, no impact studies for what this will. How it will impact schools, traffic, infrastructure. Again, I will reiterate what Chris says. This will be rezoned and there will have to be no approvals for what can be done. So we'll have no control. I was a proponent for the town meeting in December for our right for, for democracy. I feel as though the state is threatening us. With taking away different grants when the state is in budget trouble as it is. So threatening us, I'd like to see us. Come together with other communities, other towns, the Holden, the Milton's, the other towns that have not been mentioned. And see what we can do to push back on this mandate. And even make some sort of change to what is being proposed. We have a right as residents of the town of Rantham and the state of Massachusetts, but more the town of Rantham to make decisions. That impact this town and our residents without being dictated by the state and the government. So I also agree that I have, that I don't think this is a very good plan and I will not stand for it. Thank you.
I, I want to take an opportunity and I just want to ask a question for each of the select board members and I'll start with select board member Chris. Chris, why did you move to Rantham?
Joe, I moved to Rantham because I found Rantham by accident. One day, my wife and I were coming home from church and we decided to go on a ride and we kind of just. We were coming from Noelwood, we'd come down 1A and we said, I'll just keep going straight. I, I want to see what's going on. And as soon as I crossed over into downtown Rantham. I immediately, my wife and I both immediately asked Caitlin, we immediately just said, wow, there's something special about this place. The, the charm, the look, the feel, it's different. It's not cookie cutter. It's not one size fits all. It's a love. It's not cookie cutter. It's not one size fits all. It's a loving, you can just tell. It's a loving community and, uh, it's a place that we honestly, we've right then and there said, we're gonna start looking for housing in Rentham. Um, and I live in West Rentham. I love where I live in town. Um, and the reason I love it is just because, um, we have a mix. I feel like we have an awesome mix in this town of of keeping our old charm, but at the same time, moving in the right direction forward, right? We all know we need development. I, I, I'm a real estate guy by trade. I'm all for common sense development. This is not common sense. This is insanity, in my humble opinion. So I'll, I'll leave it there, Joe, but that's why I moved to Rentham.
Thank you. Bill, I'm gonna ask you the same question if you don't mind.
Uh, so honestly, uh, my wife and I both are from originally from Dedham. Uh, Dedham was a very, very small community, be much larger in landmass, uh, but it was a very safe community. It was a great place to grow up. And when we started to look for a place to live, we were very fortunate they, that the realtor showed us, uh, this particular house that we ended up buying. And it's, uh, it's exactly what we wanted it to be. It's, it Rentham to me reminds me of what Dedham was when I was a kid. It was, uh, it was a community. Everybody, it was very small. They had great sports, great schools. Everybody knew everybody, every, or, or if you didn't know them directly, you knew them somehow. Uh, it was just a very, very, very safe community to grow up in.
You hit the key, you hit one of the, the keys in, in what I'm trying to get across. You moved here because Rentham is what Dedham used to be.
That's right.
Michelle.
Yeah, very similar story to Chris's. Tim and I were traveling up the four ninety-five quarter. I grew up on the Cape, so I wanted something easy access to go visit family. Um, we were going in and out of towns, drove into Rentham Center. Immediately looked at each other and said, this feels like home. Immediate charm, the culture, just this overall feeling, and the more we drove through the town, we have felt that way. And twenty-five years later, we still feel that way. We are blessed to have been able to raise our children here. Um, it's such a wonderful community, and that is why we came here and will stay.
Now, now I came here thirty-four, well, actually it was, uh, close to thirty-five years ago and started looking at homes. My wife and I were getting married. We started, we lived in Rosendale. Uh, we were, we weren't married at the time. We wanted to live in West Roxbury, which as we know is, West Roxbury is unattainable. We looked in Dedham, we looked in Westwood, we looked in Norwood, we kept working our way out. My wife said, the one thing that's missing is there's no kids on the street playing. When we grew up in Rosendale, there was, uh, there was peep kids playing on the street. And, but we couldn't find anything we could afford in Rosendale. So we kept looking and looking and, and my wife says, we, you know, the realtors took us to, you know, Walpole, Sharon, Plainville, Foxborough, Franklin. And my wife's like, I don't see kids playing on the street. We drove down my street, there was kids playing everywhere. And it was like, she was like, this is home. This is where we want to be. This is the community we want to be. That's what we want to preserve. We all have the same story why we came here. And I think if I ask anybody else, we have some, I see people's names like Tom Maloney and, uh, Mr. Moransky knew to Rentham. Coming from Norwood, Walpole, they chose Rentham. Rebecca Zinnamore, I see her on here. Rebecca moved from she, from out of state to come here. We all have our stories. Our stories are similar. And I think our job is to fight to keep that charm and to be in control of it with a planning board that can oversee and make right decisions. You know, like a lot of people over the years had said that you're not friendly. Well, it's not that we're not friendly. We are probably the most friendly community out there, but we want to preserve charm. A- and I think we saw it, you know, when even on Rent, uh, when we had the zip trip. It would, the, the people were in awe from Fox and how, what a great town we have. And it is. It's a great town. It's, everybody knows your name. And it's something that, uh, it's, it's, you know, as I always say, Rachel, you can quote me. Rentham has that certain je ne sais quoi, and it's, it's something that definitely, uh, I know a lot of people are chiming in. And please, I know there's hands going up, but I only can fit so many on my screen, so if I miss them, I apologize, but I see somebody going by the name of CC, and who would that be? If you can state your name and your address.
My name is, um, Carolyn Castellano. I live on ninety-seven Archer Street. So I abut the, um, the village project. I live right on that little pond, if you go down Archer Street. Um, but I, I just really, I'll show my face. I don't care. I just wanted to say I'm really happy to hear your, your comments because I do believe there should be some development in that area that abuts my property. But like, I didn't move here, and I've only lived in Rentham for five years from West Roxbury. Um, that I don't, I didn't move here to live next to a bunch of townhouses and stuff. Even in West Roxbury, I go down Center Street, West Roxbury, there's they're jamming in spaces everywhere. If there's a parking lot, it's like huge apartment buildings, but I'm basically just saying thanks. I, I'm really like excited to hear, um, what, what you had to say about the projects. And again, I do believe that there should be some development back there, but you know, that we should have the control of what it looks like. So, thank you.
So you're, you're a fellow Bostonian?
Yes, I, I commute to Brookline. I'm a high school teacher at Brookline High School. And I'm really excited to live here. I've, I've really enjoyed it, so.
We, we all commute.
Yeah, I know.
Is there anybody else who would like to, uh, speak? Just raise your hand. And, uh, I will definitely, I'm scanning my screen, back and forth, looking for raised hands. Paula Sullivan. Here on mute, Paula. Paula. There you are.
Ah, hi. Some of you might know me from, I've been on the Rentham three fiftieth committee. And I am, uh, what you call OFD. So I was originally from Dorchester. But we had moved out here and when a realtor shows you a house in Franklin and then one in Rentham, they all look like, oh, it's small town. But Franklin definitely wasn't a small town. It was a growing, growing town. And this is exactly the kind of thing that they never did. They never put the brakes on. They never said, let's think about it. They just said, okay, that farm just got sold, let's develop it. And they'll put in a whole bunch of houses on quarter acre lots. And this town has been very, um, careful in its growth. And I think you guys, the way you're approaching this is, um, it, it feels good to me as a twenty-five year resident um, that you'll continue to keep the, the mood of this town.
Thank you, Paula. I know Vicky Hall wanted to speak. Vicky, could you, uh?
Yes, I, I want, uh, Vicky Hall, sixty-five Jones Street. Um, I also, um, border, um, Lake Archer. Uh, similar to the teacher from Brookline and moved here three years ago. I have lived in many places, including Rosendale, West Roxbury, and they all have charm, right? But nothing's like this place. So I really appreciate the the select board being kind of on, uh, the resident's side here. So thank you.
Thank you. Now, I, Tom, I know Tom Maloney, he had his hand up briefly and it went right down. Tom, did you want to add anything? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I thought I saw your hand up.
No, I didn't have my, my hand up, uh, if I did, it was, it was an accident. It's just the computer's fault.
Okay, I always blame the computer for everything in my life.
S- s- thank you. I, I will, we'll be checking in with the, uh, public hearing with the, with the, uh, planning board tomorrow too. But you, you guys, thank you very much for the sentiments you've expressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. If, uh, there's no other comments from the public, uh.
Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't want to digress and take up too much time. Can I just have a, a minute?
Most certainly.
Thank you. I, I just want to reiterate, and I want, I, I think it came across this way. Certainly, this is not the town that devised this up. It certainly is not a staff proposed thing. I just want to make sure that the public is aware of this. This is not something that any of us are proposing. In fact, quite the contrary. I personally have written letters of opposition over the last two years. Um, I've signed on with this board on letters of opposition during the comment period. Uh, we unfortunately have been dealt with the situation as I think, uh, select and Gallo um, kind of highlighted as a really truly an unfunded mandate. Um, the difference is when we've started going through this process and the, the, the state has continued to move the needle. And I, it's my job to advise the board and, and make sure we, you know, as much as possible, protecting the town. And I say this only just so everybody is understanding of what that impacts. We're not talking about at least the way the threats exist today. We're not talking about solely grants. If it were grants and things like that, we've had this conversation. I say, you know, keep the grants. Um, I don't see, you know, as select one Ross pointed out, I don't see us qualifying for any, um, Mass Works grants, certainly no time soon, those type of things. So those aren't really the concern. I just want to be transparent. What we're talking about is the state has truly dug their heels in. Um, the attorney general's office, if I could just read just a small couple of sentences from, this just came to the town of Milton. I just received this today. Uh, from the attorney general herself, as a matter of state law compliance, which this act is not optional, we have clearly inconsistently advised. My office will not hesitate to compel compliance with the MBTA Communities Act through legal action if necessary, should a municipality refuse to comply. In closing, we are eager to work with the town to meet its legal obligation should the town chart a course in contravention of state law. However, the attorney general's office will carry out its responsibility to enforce the law without hesitation. Now, this conversation has been happening amongst, you know, obviously municipal managers for the last two years and you know, this whole state's position of a one size fits all clearly doesn't work in Rentham, and we've clearly been vocal and clearly opposed to it. I just want to be transparent that moving in this direction is going to mean likely, whether we can get other communities to join on or not, that's kind of to be determined. Middleboro came to the state flexing and they quickly digressed and, and a- abided by it. Um, they thought they were going to go into Boston and, and say, we're not complying, and they simply, they, they quite honestly have changed their tune. Now, I know there's the Hope Deal situation that's still kind of playing out. Um, I just trying to be transparent on the advice of, you know, whether this is the direction we go or not. You know, we're, we're, we could potentially be looking at, um, you know, serious litigation funds that just aren't budgeted for, that we will have to have if we go this direction, would have to have those conversations. So it's not a matter of strictly, we're not eligible for grants. There's, there's, there's the real threat that they're continuously holding on to, that there will be civil litigation filed against any community that does not comply. So I'm just, it's my duty to make sure that, you know, that, that this board and the community is aware of those things. And then as a community, as a board, we need to make those decisions, however, whichever direction that may be. But I do want to just reiterate, we're not talking about what we were two years ago where it was just grants and then it became, you know, at that time, I, I suggested we just put the whole thing on the state property. I'll be long retired before the state ever makes any decision on a disposition of the state hospital. Um, you know, that, that, that was an easy thing. And then they, they, they caught on to that quickly and they said, well, you can no longer do that and plus the state agrees. Uh, so they've been, basically, they've recognized that there's a housing shortage throughout the Commonwealth and they're going to put it on the backs of every municipality, um, that, that meets this MBTA component. And, uh, unfortunately, that's what we're left to deal with. It's just, you know, from Rachel and our standpoint, we're trying to advise accordingly and come up with a plan on how to, how we address that. Um, I think all the sentiments and, you know, statements and opinions, we also agree and recognize, and, um, you know, we've been fully, uh, supportive of those sentiments. And again, just, I just want to make sure that the public is aware um, that may not have missed or may have missed this in the presentation. This is not something that the town of Rentham is proposing. This is a, in a response to a mandated law requirement, not, not a, um, a situation of uh, grants or anything like that. It, it potentially could turn into significantly more than that if, if we go that road. So just wanted to share that, Mr. Chair, and make sure that, um, the whole public is aware of what we're discussing.
Well, thank you. And, and I want the public to re- to realize that what Rachel has done has done her job. We hired her as a planner. Something is put in front of her. She has to present to us and she's done a great job. Uh, Kevin, I, I agree. You, you've done a great job, but you know, this is a democracy. You know, we bring this to town meeting and the residents will vote. If the residents vote no, we have no control over it. Because I think a lot of residents feel the way we feel. And it will have to deal with it. It, and we're not gonna, I am not going to tell any resident of Rentham, you have to vote because of the threats. I'm going to tell them you have to vote based on what you feel and your heart. And I think that's the route we have to go. And I think we have to be prepared because the, the passion in Rentham is so strong for this community. You know, it's, it's not just the houses. And we're not saying we don't want to comply. We don't want to comply with the density levels. It's, it's, they're too egregious. If they would reduce the density levels, we have no problem. We're, you know, I, I'm not speaking for the other board members, but I'm comfortable with what's proposed for Village Zone B. You know, I do agree, we do need to have some, you know, multifamily homes, but not at that density. We need them for young families. You know, it's just my daughter lives on the Cape. She would love to live in Rentham. I know Bill's got, you know, married children that would love to come back here if there was a more affordable. Luckily, his daughter was able to make a move and get here, but he has three sons that I'm sure would like to come back to Rentham. You know, uh, Michelle, your kids are young and, and, uh, you know, they, they may want to invest in Rentham and give back to the community that they grew up in and, and raise their kids here because of the experience they had. And we want to make sure that that opportunity is there. But by them mandating, what they're mandating is not allowing us to do that. What allows us to do that is to have a strong planning board that can forecast and plan our future based on the information we have in our master plan and, and forecast that way. And that's what it's about. It's not like we're putting our feet in the sand because the state come down and says you have to do it. No. It's because we know what the people want. We talk to the people every day. You know, I saw Joe Stewart. He, his comment is the same on, on social media. We need to have homes that our kids can stay here and live. We don't have that. That's our problem. And affordable housing is defined differently in communities based on, you know, what you have. But people came to Rentham and we have an open space committee for open space, not for very dense communities. So Rachel, I, I appreciate everything you do. I really do. I may not agree, but I know why you're doing it. And I, I you know, it's don't hate the player, hate the game. It's the game we got to play with the state. And, and Kevin, the same thing, but you know, we're going to leave this up. It's going to go to an article at town meeting. And if it, if it passes that town meeting, the people of Rentham want it, then I think we understand what the people want. It's a democracy. If they don't, then we have to steer the ship through the storm. But we need to get more information from other communities. Like I said, Holden was sued by the AG's office and the AG lost. So I want to get more information on Holden and see what happened there. Uh, it, it, don't threaten us, you know, just work with us. That's what the state should be doing, is working with, not threatening us.
Absolutely. And I wonder what, Mr. Chair, if I may, I wonder what would happen if the courageous town of Rentham banded with some of these other courageous towns and continued to stand up. Maybe other towns would get more confident and say, we're not going to take this unfunded mandate either, and we're going to fight. And imagine if we had, you know, uh, let's get the news coverage on that, on how many towns are fighting this unfunded mandate. And, uh, sometimes, you know, my grandfather once told me that sometimes you got to punch the bully in the eye. You know, you can't just be pushed around all the time. So we know what's best for our community. We have nine thousand voters who know what's best for our community, not some person who sits in the state house. So let us determine what's good for our community. Why do we have Home Rule? Why do we vote anything if that's the case? So that's my point. And again, Rachel, I think you do a great job. This is not, this is not a, like Joe said, this is not an attack on you. This is not an attack on any on the town. We know that this was something that was put on you and you're just doing your job. Um, but, uh, we have to defend the, the, the best interests of the nine thousand, of the twelve thousand residents, nine thousand voters. And I can tell you that people that, uh, I talk to, people that, uh, support me, um, I haven't met one person that was for this yet. So I'll leave it with, I'll leave it there, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right. Rachel? You wish you were watching, uh, Dancing with the Stars or something else, right?
No, um, that's okay. Uh, it's a True Detective is what I'm watching now, so. Night country.
So, Mr. Chair, tomorrow night, is this presentation's going to be with a planning board for residents to also participate in and ask questions?
Yep. There's a public camp tomorrow, so it's another opportunity for people to speak. So, you know, based on what you heard tonight, it, I, I encourage you tomorrow evening to log on. I- is there limited seating in that Zoom meeting tomorrow to a hundred people or do we have unlimited? I know some of our Zooms have limited.
I honestly don't know. I'll double check that, um, to make sure. Um, and I'll also, uh, you know, put some other safeguards in place similar to, uh, Amanda did. So, but I also do, um, invite you to review the draft zoning bylaw as well, um, to, if there's anything in there that you want to add to make it stronger. If in the worst case scenario in your, in your, um, that this ends up getting passed, I guess, in your eyes, um, then you at least have something, a bylaw that reflects, um, kind of what you want. So, whether it be now or So whether it be now or years from now, um, I just recommend you taking a look at the draft bylaw. Cause again, they'll have to meet that bylaw for the project, but yeah, tomorrow at seven, seven fifteen, there's a lot of other things on, uh, the planning board's list. Um, but yeah, that'll be on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just one, one thing before we go is, is I, it just brought me back when we had a presentation from Tremel Crow for a a forty B or apartment development at four ninety-five and one A. And the one thing he said is just wait until the state, you know, forces you to do this and see what happens. That's what we're afraid. If we do it, they will come. I know you say that it doesn't have to be done. But if we do it, they will come. So we have to be prepared for that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, someone asked a very good question in the chat. Who, who can, who can the residents, uh, call and, and voice their support or frustration with uh, regarding this, uh, zoning, uh, law that they're trying to, uh, enforce upon us? Do we have contact information? Is it the AG's office? Um, I'd love to have nine thousand or twelve thousand residents, give them a jingle tomorrow. Um, and let them know their opinion on this.
I, I think a letter to our state senator and our state rep might be helpful. That they can show that the support they're getting, you know, the anti-support for this. Uh, because, you know, I know our state rep Marcus Vaughn is with us this evening and I thank you for joining us, Marcus. Uh, but our state senator is not. So, uh,
Becca Roush, so we can give the people Becca Roush's information, email address, so you can find it, you can just Google it and find that. I would also recommend Marcus Vaughn. I would also recommend go to AG Healy. Contact her office directly.
We have a new
The government, go, go to Governor Healy's. That's what I meant. Governor Healy's on.
You know, it's, it's, I think we have to fight the fight because it's, you know, Rantham is strong. Rantham is a strong community.
It's not gonna, uh, Mr. Chair, I don't think it's gonna stop here. That's the issue. You don't stop here, it's gonna keep going and the mandates are gonna come and who's, who, you know. Next thing you know, we lose complete control of this town.
Exactly. All right. I just want, want to make sure, I just saw another chat pop up. I just want to make sure we address everything. Uh, yep, someone recommended we go to our state senator, which we definitely will reach out and, uh, this is really a good discussion. I appreciate everybody, you know, listening in, the input we got, uh, we thank you all. We still have some more stuff. Our next discussion is about Tri-County Vocational High School Building Project Debt Schedule. So speaking of, uh, you know, something that we're going to have to be incurring. I'm going to turn it over to, we're on tab, uh, tab six. I'm going to turn it over to our town administrator, Sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, just wanted to have a, a discussion. We now have the debt schedule that, that we've been provided by, um, Tri-County Vocational Technical School as, uh, the board is aware and our residents are aware, the, uh, project for the uh, replacement building project of the Tri-County Vocational School passed. Um, the town of Rantham passed the project by about eighty percent. Um, so pretty overwhelmingly, uh, especially for a, a school building project. Um, we're now left to, um, figure out how to fund it and how to pay for it. We've been having this conversation now uh, for some time. So we, we know that the, the potential of, uh, the project passing and what that would mean. Um, and one thing I will say before I pull it up and I'll share with you uh, the debt schedule is it looks like we're probably about a year ahead of schedule um, for timing of what we were anticipating. And, um, I will let me just screenshot real quick. Um, I emailed this to the board. This just, this just came in. Um, so you did get it late. You should have it in your email as well, but I will share it, um, for those looking on, uh, can you see that? Okay, um, so the big takeaway is essentially this here FY twenty-four, which is our current fiscal year we're in now. Um, the temporary debt issued, they, uh, moved forward with a ban of bond anticipation note of twenty million dollars, um. With any ban as we have for our own local projects, um, and the like. The interest payment on the short-term interest is what's, what's owed until they kind of go out and do, um, final borrowing. So the total short-term interest in this line here for FY twenty twenty-five is seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and forty of which, uh, Rantham share in this column here, you can see is eight point one seven percent of the total, um, net debt service. Which means in FY twenty twenty-five, we'll have a interest payment due of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven. Um, FY twenty-five is not the, uh, fiscal year that I'm concerned about. Um, obviously, you know, any, uh, any increase to the general fund budget, um, you know, we have to really kind of look and prioritize and impacts, um, everything else. But again, we, we have to fund it and it's a project that uh, is moving forward. We can cover, um, and we'll talk about a little bit of, as we get further into the budget and future conversations. The fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven will be included in our FY twenty-five assessment. Um, the FY twenty-five assessment with that uh, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven hour share of the interest that will be due in FY twenty-five. Um, inclusive of that and the increase, I think of about four pupils, which is the commitment as of October first of twenty twenty-three, which determines what our assessment will be. Um, it goes up about ten percent overall. So the Tri-County, uh, vocational school building, um, project inclusive of the actual assessment for a student populate, uh, pupil, um, to the town is about a ten percent increase. That's fairly consistent with what we've seen the last couple of years, uh, with where we're beginning hit with that increase as well. Um, the bigger conversation and in the conversation that, you know, we, we need to have and we've started preliminary around is, is the debt exclusion conversation and, and that, um, is really important for FY twenty twenty-six. You can see here um, that the town's portion will jumps up to six hundred and eighty-two thousand in FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven. And then, um, just around, you know, just under nine hundred thousand for the duration, the majority of this, uh, thirty-year borrowing. Um, is a, a amount that is not something that the town can afford, um, to cover within, certainly within our general fund, certainly within our existing um, levy capacity. As you know, and I've been working hard for the last six years, this is now my seventh budget. Um, I've been working on stressing and we've done, um, that as much as we can. The reduction of our free cash or our one-time revenues to balance our budget. Um, we're still a long way off from that. So that means every fiscal year, we're starting the town budget with a structural deficit of, you know, up to a million and a half, uh, depending on where we've been. And that's been as high as a million seven. Um, not sound municipal financing. Um, there's some other variables that do play into that. Uh, the town does do some conservative, uh, revenue estimates and things like that, which is, which is sound, um, fiscal budgeting, municipal budgeting, but um, you know, right from the, the get-go, we, we start out every single fiscal year with a structural deficit because of that issue. To then try to ha, bring in a, you know, six, seven, eight hundred and as much as nine hundred thousand dollar um, debt payment in the general fund is not doable. Um, it's not doable without significant cuts. Um, you know, the education budget alone occupies about fifty-two percent of the entire town's budget, um, which means it's going to have to be cuts to education. Um, the only real control we have, as you know, is, is the elementary schools budget. Um, you know, we have very limited pushback, you know, we're one of three communities, yes, the largest. Uh, but only, you know, one of three voices, uh, ultimately with, um, King Philip budget. Uh, we don't have a lot of, uh, a lot of discretion there, a lot of, you know, if it passes, uh, you know, what we have to fund, we, you know, from my end, continues to have those pushbacks as much as possible and holding them to certain percentage increases, but ultimately, uh, we're kind of, we're kind of left with not a lot of control there. And then when it comes to Tri-County, we have zero control. We have zero control over the, uh, the assessment that's related to that. And you know as well as I do, as a new building, um, gets built and occupied, that also draws more students. So we're, you know, we're potentially, um, taking those students and potentially adding that to a potential increase, not only of um, the, the building project or the capital piece of it, but certainly the, uh, interest in attending and, and all things. No, not to say that, you know, the buildings are, you know, that's a mute point at this point. It's been approved. They definitely need, um, you know, need the project, they need a building. Um, the community, as we said, uh, you know, eighty percent passed, I think at least with the turnout, eighty percent of those, uh, supported it. Um, you know, we just now need to, uh, to, to pay for that, uh, that vote. And, you know, what we're going to be asking for is, uh, a debt exclusion vote to be able to handle that um, portion out of the eleven communities that make up Tri-County. Um, the only one that has done it so far is, uh, the town of Franklin. Franklin passed it with their November election. They're also in a unique position unlike um, the other ten communities and, and when they're, I think North Auburn maybe on the same cycle, but um, as a town council form of government, as a legislative body, they don't have a town meeting, whether it be uh, open or representative, they have a, uh, a, a council manager form of government. And, um, they, they, uh, they have a No, a November, uh, local election. So they did pass it, um, they're the only one of the eleven. They did pass a debt exclusion, um, in that community. What I'd like, and Mike King, our finance director is on as well. He can, um, also answer any questions, but I think, um, as we've known this is coming, uh, I think we're going to be looking to ask for a fairly quick turnaround uh, with our local election as a ballot question for April. Um, I've discussed it with the town clerk and her concerns around whether or not it's even possible to do with, uh, the state primary, which would be in September. She, uh, is not a, not fully on board with that, whether we, it's even doable. Um, and, and then so, you know, moving into kind of next year, we have our local election, obviously for April. Um, but then we're left in September, September third, I think with the state primary followed by, um, the November election and, and the like. So we'd like to get it on for, uh, this local election as a ballot question, which would mean um, the board would have to approve the ballot question in our next meeting on February twentieth. Uh, pretty standard language, um, that's already been kind of drafted up. We would have legal review, uh, and look to put it on. Concerns around that, um, is the, the lack of education in the sense of timing. You know, it's a fairly quick turnaround to educate our voters on what we're asking for and why we're on there. Um, you know, forty-five day kind of education campaign, um, you know, I think is, is not ideal. Uh, but again, this, this debt issuance, uh, it happened quicker than we were told initially. We were kind of thinking this was going to be a twenty twenty-seven as opposed to a twenty twenty-six. Uh, which has ramped up the importance of, uh, the necessity to kind of do this, um, sort of now, if it, if it were, you know, unfortunately, if it failed having, um, additional abilities to add it, uh, again down the road. Because again, not passing it as a debt exclusion would have significant, um, impacts to, uh, to the town operations, um, across the board. Uh, one thing just before, um, answer any questions and, um, happy to do so. And as I said, Mike's with us as well. Um, just as a caveat, uh, FY twenty-six, our last payment of our debt exclusion uh, for King Philip is due. So that's about six hundred thousand. So you can see, and what, what in this breakdown, you can see what the impact for a tax rate for both, uh, commercial and the median, um, annualized in, increase for both commercial and, uh, residential. Um, at twenty-six, we kind of will have that one overlap year because we, we will have a debt payment due for the, um, for King Philip as our debt exclusion. We only have one debt exclusion. The only, the only excluded debt we have is the King Philip, um, regional school debt. Um, and that does roll off in FY twenty-six. Um, obviously there's other conversations, right? I mean, we know we're in the process of talking about our own elementary school. We're in the thought process of talking about um, the public works, uh, facility. Um, and a number of other things, I'm sure King Philip also will be back at the table with projects, but as it stands today, um, our debt exclusion that exists rolls off in FY twenty-six, but we do need to take on this new debt. So that that is a roughly around a four hundred thousand dollar delta without anything else coming on. Not that that's, you know, minimal, um, you know, obviously there's, there's going to be increases, but um, it's not as much as the, the nine hundred thousand if, once the, uh, KP rolls off as far as impact. So happy to answer any questions. I know this is, um, happening a little bit quicker than we had anticipated. And as Mike and I, um, have been involved with the conversations for as long as we have. Um, they were really pushing that FY twenty-seven, uh, was going to be really our first, uh, kind of payment, but, um, it looks like that's not the case. This, uh, debt schedule I think is carrying about a four and a quarter. Um, interest rate about four point two five, you know, there is that caveat that interest rates are based on, you know, the current market conditions and obviously are subject to change. Um, and then as I said, this is based on our enrollment, um, based as of October first of twenty twenty-three. Um, and you know, future debt assess, assessments will be, you know, will vary based on, um, actual student enrollment. That's how the, as part of a um, you know, this district, it's actually determined. So that's where it is now. Generally speaking, we're kind of in, will be in that range. Ideally, we, they are able to secure a lower interest rate. Um, but again, also the interest in, uh, enrollment will also trigger our impact for the capital piece as well. So that's all, uh, from the presentation, Mr. Chair, and, and Mike and I are happy to answer any questions.
Right. I'd like to welcome Mike King, our finance director to the meeting. Uh, Mike has been with us, what, now three years?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, three years.
You've been a great addition and we welcome you to our meeting. And I'm going to open the questions to our board members. Uh, since on my screen, select board member Rouse is right next to Kevin, I'm going to start with her.
Kevin, will you just go through again? So, uh, King Philip rolls off in twenty twenty-six, is that what you said? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so fiscal year twenty twenty-six, uh, so two more fiscal years. We have FY twenty-five payment and then our last payment will be in FY twenty-six. So we have two remaining debt payments, uh, for the, for KP.
Okay, thank you.
And that's our only excluded debt in the town of Rantham.
At this time, yes. Okay. Thank you.
But just for the folks at home, when that debt exclusion comes off, it does not free up uh, any ink, any, uh, any monies to help fund anything within our operating budget. Because it was a debt exclusion was outside that, where some of the debt we had for the elementary school, the library, the town hall, that was taking from services that was, those debts rolled off, we were able to restore services, correct?
That's absolutely a hundred percent accurate. Yeah, the, the excluded debt excludes us from the levy and prop. Um, so this debt being inside of that, essentially it, it, it helps, you know, residents and our um, commercial as well. Um, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't help back in anything with regards to the operation budget or the, you know, the general fund, as you stated.
Select Board Member Gallo.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Kevin, do we, do the, do we have a document at some point, at some place where the residents could look and see debt that's falling off in twenty-six, the estimated debt that we know of as of right now that's coming on uh, over the next, let's just say, five fiscal years, um, and the impact to, to just get an idea of what we're looking at, you know, uh, from potential, uh, debt exclusion needs with regard to, you know, I don't know, for infrastructure, for potential wells, for a potential DPW facility for because when I'm talking to residents, I'm often, I'm often asked that this very question is, you know, what long-term debt do we have rolling off? What do we forecast coming on in the next five years? And then the overall impact of that?
Yeah, it, it's, it's real easy to do based on committed debt. And we do have that and what I, what I showed, um, obviously is the proposed, you know, subject to change debt schedule for this particular debt. And then what's off, we can certainly show, you know, the, the existing two payments that remain as far as excluded debt. The difficulty becomes, um, we, we do it internally and kind of put, I hesitate to put numbers out there. Um, you know, on, on projects, it's way too early for me to try to, um, you know, for us, we haven't even gone into any real conversation as far as a school building committee. Um, as far as costs associated with that, that whole, it's a whole other different formula because of the MSBA um, reimbursement fifty-two percent. And, you know, we can, we can do basically take by chunks of ten millions using a four and a quarter percent, um, you know, conservative interest rate and come up with um, you know, what is the average single-family home impact and some of that, but I, I hesitate to kind of put that out as, you know, sharing any, because it's all, yeah, it's all, um, hypothetical in some ways. I mean, right, I mean, we talking about a ten million dollar DBW facility or a thirty million, eighty million.
If I could interject, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Maybe I'm talking about more project-based, right? So people want to know like what big expenses do we have coming up in town? I guess, and I, I completely agree with you that, well, we talking, yeah, to your points, it's very hard to, to, you know, put those numbers together when we don't even have a school committee, uh, you know, when, you know, when we don't even have rough numbers from uh, our own school committee, uh, you know, on our school. We don't even have rough numbers yet on the proposed DPW facility. But when I talk to residents, I just think it's important for them to know that, you know, we have Tri-County, we have the Rantham School. We, we potentially are going to be asking for, you know, DPW facility. We have infrastructure needs. For, you know, DPW facility, we have infrastructure needs, we're testing wells. In West, you know what I'm saying, like, I just want to make sure people understand that. What what is going on and what the potential needs are uh, over the next five years.
Sure, yeah. Large-scale capital um, infrastructure replacements, I mean. Yeah, we can put kind of raw numbers on, okay, we have a backlog of, say, road infrastructure, um, road and sidewalks, fifteen million, um.
Right.
Those type of things we, you know, we could do, um, obviously, any of the water projects. Is um, is the rate payers, you know, that's, that's a.
Right.
Debt, principal and interest debt within the um, water rates, and is, you know, is a little bit treated differently as far as uh. You know, the the taxes, but yeah, I mean, I think um. Some of that is still kind of being fished up, but we could certainly at least, we we know project-wise. What do we have kind of on the horizon for the next ten years? This far, you know, big project, and then of course, every year. Um, every year, we, you know, we we have a five-year capital plan, Mike's taken over that. Um, you know, Mike, Mike's got a great uh. Foundation on that, will be continuing to expand upon the work that I did initially. Um, drafting really the first comprehensive plan back in twenty nineteen. Um, which then became, you know, Chad Lovett, our former director of facilities and capital planning. And now um, Mike has taken over the leadership of that, and, you know, he's already um. You know, distributed, met with department heads, having the conversation, everything's due, actually, at the end of this month. And some of those ongoing things, most of which we've been able to handle outside of borrowing. Um, we, and you know, that's where that whole component of uh. Utilizing all of the town's free cash and and things, one-time revenues. Becomes concerning, right, is is, you know, we want to try to have, when we deal with um. When we deal with capital and we deal with this infrastructure stuff, is have a balanced approach of. Not all be debt, not all be um, you know, from the budget and that sort of thing, so those one-time off, one-off. Things that are deemed capital, which is twenty-five thousand or more, that has a useful life of five years or five or more years. Um, kind of funding those things, so yeah, I mean, uh, we can try to. At least put big picture around, because, you know, obviously, we know we're having these conversations, we just don't know. You know, even even as much as cost-wise, it's just so year to year is difficult, because. You know, we're seeing, we're seeing project delays, each year you delay, and some of these projects have gone up a million bucks. Um, that's why I like to that point, like to your point on, you know, if we say ten million and then. Two years from now, it's a sixty, yeah, so, yeah.
I just don't, I just don't like when, when, I I want residents to have as much information as possible, and I don't ever want to have anyone say to me like. What do you mean, you're going to be coming to me for potentially a new DBW facility? Well, it's been on the plan for. Twenty years, we've been talking about it now for this many years, I just think education is key, so whatever we could do to get our long-term needs. To make sure that as many people have access to that as possible, I just think it's going to help us with the residents, we're making these difficult decisions.
Understood.
Thank you.
Great. Select Board Member Harrington.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, Kevin, the only thing I have is um, really, uh, right now would be um. Just the timing of trying to. Not educate the public on the debt exclusion by trying to rush it through uh, too quickly. Uh, you know, a- a- as a board member, quite honestly, I think we. We try and, we rush too many things through. Uh, and it's, uh, uh, in the end, I just don't think it's uh, open and transparent to the townspeople.
Fair enough, that's kind of what Mike and I. You know, have been battling with, I mean, you know, we have our local election, as you know, um. First Monday in April, and timing isn't ideal, but then, short of that. Uh, we're up, we're up, again, I guess, you know, we're trying to time this because we need to have an approval. For FY twenty-six operations, so. If, if the state primary is not it, if it's, if the um, you know, the election in November isn't it. Um, you know, there's a special election perhaps, outside of that, we're now asking the town clerk and. Them to do another election in a year that's already several elections. Um, and. You know, I try to get it on there. For, you know, for April, try to do what we can to educate and get the word out, um. Recognizing, and that's the piece that Mike and I have been battling with, it's just, it's not ideal, I, we fully agree. Um, but we also, you know, we also are concerned that, you know, this is coming due. And um, you know, FY twenty-six will be here before we know it as far as. The ability, because we're not really, you know, we're not talking about July one of of uh, you know, twenty-five, we're talking about. You know, the budget impacts and everything else that's happening, that's happening a year from now. Um, you know, because if, if the, the, you know, this six hundred and eighty-two thousand. Is going to be due no matter what, and it's, it's, it's up to towns now obligated to fund it. Um, so we got to come up with seven hundred thousand if, if a debt exclusion didn't pass, and that means significant budget cuts that um. Is a bigger conversation that we can't wait to have until, you know, the spring um, of that year, so that. I fully agree with you, I, you know, I, um, it's not ideal, um. Timing, education.
Um, but. I, I, like, like, like you said, I I I totally agree, and it's something the town voted for, so we're all on board with. Obviously, they, the townspeople are on board with paying for it, um, but I I I still think trying to rush it through. Um. It just isn't transparent to me anyway, but that's it, that's all I got.
Yeah, in a, in a perfect world, right, we would have, it would have been the same ballot question. Um, as we've talked about, you know, we would never do a project where we're asking, you want to build it? And then months later saying, well, now, you said, yeah, you want to build it, but now we're asking you to pay for it. Um, that would have been one vote. You know, the amount, and it either passes up or down with the debt exclusion, unfortunately, the way. This is structured, we didn't have that um, ability with its separate district and all of the eleven communities, so. This isn't an ideal way of going about any of this, um, and certainly would never happen if this was a local project.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. King, would you like to add anything?
Uh, Town Administrator Sweet hit on, um, all the major talking points, thank you.
All right. You're going to get back to us, so we may have something in front of us on the twentieth, pending what the town clerk finds out, correct?
That's correct, so I I've spoke to her a couple of times today, and um. The request is to do it for April one, we just need to have legal review of the language and ask the board to um. Approve the ballot question at your next meeting, which would be the twentieth. Um, if the April one is to happen.
Okay, could you do us one more favor? I know you're in the, starting the budget season, but if that does come to us on the twentieth for an April one. Vote, could you prepare an action plan on how we can get the message out to our residents and how to educate? So we're just not putting it out there, let's have a plan if we have to go that route, on how we could do this. And anybody on the meeting, if you were an advocate to help. Uh, I know there was a lot of people who came out to support the uh, Tri County vote. If you could just reach out to Amanda at Town Hall to show your support and help us spread the word. Uh, you know, it would be great, you know, anything we can do in in the event that we need to go that route, we we should be prepared.
Absolutely, and yeah, Mike and I discussed that today about um. You know, the need to do a a public uh, you know, PR campaign and just educate um, the residents, what, why we're asking for what we are and. Why we're, you know, why, why it's on the ballot, so.
And I agree with Select Board Member uh, Harrington, we hate rushing things. But unfortunately, what ends up happening is, when we're, when we're eleventh of the pie. And everyone else pushes through, we have to kind of go with it, and it just, it kind of stinks. But thank you for everything, thank you for, Michael King, for joining us this evening, we appreciate it, and we appreciate everything you do. Uh, we're going to go over to tab seven, this is vote to reappoint town manager with a term effective. February fourteen, two thousand twenty-four through February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Now, the appointment is by the charter, that we have to reappoint our town administrator for a three-year term. Uh, this has nothing to do with anything else that we've talked about in the past, this is just to reappoint him, if we don't reappoint him. Uh, it just means he can't work, it's a, it's kind of a ceremonial thing. And uh, we we've gotten a list of what he's done over the past uh, his his tenure with us, which. Uh, I'm I'm running out of scrolling down, it's, the accomplishments have been great, and and Kevin, you know, we really appreciate everything you do. Uh, you know, you have been not only a talented administrator, town manager. But you embrace the community and the community's embraced you, which is a positive thing. And uh, you know, and I see the support from uh. Uh, from Stephanie Duquette. As a resident and as a coworker, her support for reappointment to you. The high point she has in there, I think we, I know, I echo the sentiments, you know, you really have. Uh, you know, in in the past, nobody knew who the town administrator was, and we made that position in twenty fourteen a strong position. And you've embraced it, uh, you you, the communication. Uh, you know, we're seeing a lot of things out there we haven't seen ten years ago, so thank you, and uh. I I I uh, I'm going to let, you know, have the board have anything to say before we go to the reappointment, we'll start with Select Board Member Gallo.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, very brief, I talked to Kevin a lot, Kevin, um. Uh, as I was joking with you earlier, um, you know, like Joe, it took me a long time to scroll through all the pages. Uh, but that, you you're doing a great job, I appreciate your hard work. Um. We are, you know, in my humble opinion, we have one of the best town managers in the state. Um, and uh. But you know what, what I always say to Kevin, you might get a chuckle out of this, he's got one of the best towns in the state, if not the best town in the state. So it's a, it's a, it's a great marriage, it's a win-win, happy to have you, Kevin, and um, I'm glad we could reappoint you. Uh, for town manager for another three years. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Yeah, I agree with uh, you know, Chris wholeheartedly, Kevin does a great job, we're fortunate to have him, and quite honestly. Um, like he said, he's fortunate to have us. Uh, Rentham is a great community and um. We work well together. And uh, I appreciate all the hard work that he puts in to make it the community that it is.
Thanks, Bill.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Ditto, ditto, and ditto, happy to be able to reappoint you. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
As you know, my famous line, and Chris Gallo will probably sing it with me, Rentham is not a town, it's a.
Family. I beat Chris to it.
Oh, I thought you were looking to, I thought you were looking to end the meeting.
Yeah, I thought he was going to give me the Jim Anderson, uh.
So at this time, the charity did a motion to reappoint Kevin Sweet as town manager for a term effective February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Through February thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven. So we had a motion made by Selectman Harrington, second by Selectman Gallo, is it ready for the discussion? Select Board Member, what's that, did I do something wrong?
Selectman Gallo's voice was a little higher, I guess.
It was very feminine tonight, it was me, but that's, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Select Board Member Rouse, this is new, that you're seconding motions and making.
Really?
Yes, it's only been ten months. Good job, that's part of Lambert would say. So let's make that correction to the, to the minutes, going to go to roll call vote, Selectman Votash, yes, Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
Right, let's go over to tab seven, our town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the entire board for that support. Um, looking forward to many more years and many more uh, accomplishments as a team, um, you know, the team we have in place is uh. Outstanding, I think there's only two department heads in my six-year tenure that I haven't appointed. Um, we've built a really high-performing team and and, you know, everybody works. My success and the town's success is is uh, you know, attributed to um, everyone around me as well, you know, only as good as the team, so. Thank you for that support, and um, you know, looking forward to, uh, as I said, many more years. Um, jumping into a couple of things, I'll be brief tonight, I know we've had a lot of uh, dialogue, um, the FY twenty-five process. Is uh, more than fully underway, uh, individual departments uh, submitted their budget worksheets. Um, by January twenty-ninth, all those, all of their budgets, so thank you to all of the departments that worked uh. Diligently and hard to really look into their budgets, um, you know, there'll be some uh, some sad news in some areas, and you know, uh. I think that's expected, but thank you for, uh, to them for really, you know, taking the budget directive, we had a four-page. Budget directive and message on where we, where things are at, the fiscal climate, what things are looking like. And I want to thank them for um, taking that seriously and really looking into it. Um, with that being said, uh, Mike uh, King and I have set up and scheduled uh, department head meetings to review. Budgets submitted over the next two weeks, um, we're trying to meet with every department head. Um, review their budget, re- review their ass, and really understand what, you know, what they're looking for beyond just the submittal. Um, and we hope to have that wrapped up by the end of this month, uh, the latest, so over the next two weeks or so. Um, and then, you know, as we continue to to plug in things as they become available. Couple of big factors that are still out there is our health insurance renewal. Um, I, I'm thinking based on conversations we're having, we're probably. Not on the high end of the extreme, and certainly not on the low end, uh, we're probably the average of the increase, which um. It was probably around six, six and a half percent, um, as a budget, um. Placeholder and kind of where we'll pro- likely end up with our health insurance renewal, certainly in line with uh, health insurance uh, trend. Uh, and the like, it's uh, it's a costly, um, a- as you know, it's always a big driver and a big. Uh, impact to to the budget discussion. Um, the other one is around uh, the KP. Uh, assessment, um, again, something that we, you know, generally have to kind of be uh. Larry on the rest of the budget on where those numbers come in, I will say, without giving out anything definitive now. Um, where things are lining up, um, Rentham's portion this year as was in last year. Um, you know, our renewal for FY twenty-five will be in in good shape. Um, you know, I think we're, we're really trying to hold King Philip to no more than a four percent increase, I think. If you haven't already, you'll start to hear from the school superintendent and the school committee for King Philip, that they're having um. Major budget issues and concerns, they have a number of uh, special education um, students, for whatever reason, I. Haven't really, you know, been able to hammer into that, other than, you know, some misguided maybe. Um, reviews in the past, because some of these should not be um, surprises. Uh, but some of the special education costs that are driving and, um, I think they're going to have some real, it being held to that. Four percent, and as you know, any, any percentage that that school, uh, that the budget increase for King, for King Philip, doesn't, that doesn't mean it's a three percent or four percent. For Rentham, it's a fact, it's the four factors and drivers that make up that budget formula, so. What could be a four percent uh, budget hold for. You know, a King Philip overall budget might be a seven, eight, nine percent for any one of our three communities. Um, I will say that Rentham is is in good shape. Um, likely based on what we're seeing for um. You know, minimum school spending and what builds the formula budget that determines the the budget. Um, formula for our KP and what determines the assessment. Um, so I think our number for FY twenty-five is, from an increase standpoint. Um, should be bearable, it shouldn't be anything outrageous. As we've seen in prior years, you know, we're not looking at an eight percent or anything like that, I think we'll be in the lower percentage, um. Even, you know, like I said, potentially even well below the four percent, uh, depending on how. That plays out, now, that that means that, um, I think Plainville is going to be the one this year that. As you know, last year in Norfolk and then us several years prior. Um, I think Plainville will see the largest percentage impact. Um, followed by Norfolk, followed by Rentham, and and that. You know, isn't completely a surprise, although there are three factors that we really don't know until that number is set. Um, based on um, the average, you know, average income and home sales and things like that, that that are really kind of a little bit more difficult to predict. But we certainly, with our school enrollment, we can kind of see where things are at. And if you remember, five years ago, I was predicting that Norfolk was going to be bursting at their elementary school, and eventually, we're going to be kind of catching up to us. Either way, um, you know, the the town of Rentham uh, has the largest lion's share percentage, we, we have the most. Uh, students and have the biggest cost, but from year to year, um, FY twenty-four over FY twenty-five. Um, FY twenty-five or FY twenty-four, uh. It shouldn't be as um. At huge of an impact, at least in FY twenty-five, so I'm hopeful that will help uh, bear some of our other expenses and in costs and. Um, being able to deal with our FY twenty-five budget overall, so. More to come on that, um, and more to come on as we finalize, uh. I think the um, retirement is a, is just around like seven point eight percent, uh, just under eight. Um, that's still on track to be fully funded for uh, twenty twenty-nine. Um, so there's been an aggressive plan there to fully fund uh, Norfolk County in retirement. Um, and and we're looking at, you know, future conversations around that, but the, that, that's still a big impact annually. Um, as far as an increase for that particular line item. Um, all of this within, you know, the restrictions of Prop two and a half and. Our levy, our levy capacity and and levy limit, which is uh, always a tough conversation, that's why, you know, thank um. Continuous all the efforts and work that uh, the Board of Assessors does, um, our uh. Newly, fairly newly appointed principal assessor, uh, was our former data collector. Getting out there and really hitting the grind on um, on new growth and um. You know, seeing some of these projects that come in, help the overall budget to be able to build a foundation for the next fiscal year's budget. Um, so, you know, uh, Rob and his team and, you know, getting all of that, uh, helps. Um, so, you know, uh, Rob and his team and, you know, getting all of that, uh, helps, helps the, the financial pitcher for where we stand for the next fiscal year, um, because under, under Prop two and a half, um, you know, what we're seeing is average four, five, um, easily five, six percent increases on some contractual stuff that are out of our wheelhouse is not sustainable with a two and a half percent, increase. So, um, more to come on that, but it just, you know, we are diligently, uh, working as we do every year on the budget and, um, I think you'll continue to see the final budget submittal, um, getting closer and closer to that GFoa Government Finance Officers, um, Association GFoa Budget Ma- um, distinguished budget that I've been looking at for the next, for the last, uh, six years and a goal, uh, bringing Mike, uh, King on board and really, you know, putting that in his wheelhouse and, and charging him with getting us there has been, uh, a big driver, um, as well as his team, uh, both the town accountant and assistant town accountant. So, that document from what those that have been around long enough know is just a couple of spreadsheets is, you know, in the oh, hundreds of pages and will, contains a lot more, information for, for you and, and the residents. So, uh, more to come on that. Those that aren't aware, if anybody had, did not see, um, Chief McGrath's post and some other things, just want to publicly put out there that the town does have a, uh, full-time regional animal control officer shared with the town of Plainville. Um, Animal Control Officer Lexi Clank, she joined us, um, again, serving Rentham and Plainville. Uh, she comes with a wealth of experience from other communities. Um, absolutely adores animals. She's stationed at the Rentham Police Department, reports directly to Chief McGrath, um, under his oversight and, uh, is frequently out and about in the community conducting inspections, corralling horses, rescuing lost pets. Um, so if, you know, the residents do see her, those that, that interact with her, um, please welcome her to our community. We're fortunate, to have landed Lexi. She's really, uh, jumped right in. She's really, um, blending in really, really great with our public safety, uh, building staff, um, the officers, uh, our dispatch and the like. So she's been a great addition and, um, it, it's worked out, um, exceptional and, and we're happy to have her on board. Uh, we are in the process of finalizing the Public Works, uh, project, uh, bid, um, requests for qualifications for designer, architecture services for advertisement. Um, that should be going out, um, hopefully soon in the next couple of weeks finalized. Getting that on combis posted for a few weeks and going through that process with the Public Works Building Committee. And then, um, Greg and I have been working on and have brought in recently our cen- uh, central, uh, Services Coordinator, uh, Nancy to work on the municipal aggregation. We did, uh, we were going to be working with Good Energy. Good Energy is, uh, one of the main players in the Commonwealth of Mass for municipal aggregation. They do, uh, uh, several communities. I can share the map, uh, but certainly directly next to us in the town of Plainville and others, they're, they're really, uh, they've been in this wheelhouse for, um, you know, for as long as the deregulation and, um, you know, we've, we've got a great, uh, plan to move forward with them and, and really roll out the municipal aggregation and get that process going. Um, and finally getting that vote, uh, established to be able to, to be able to do so. All good things. Um, last thing I just want to mention is, seven seventy-five South Street, the former Mara property, the property that the town auctioned off. Um, I was able to attend a meeting today with, uh, Rachel Benson, the town planner, other, uh, town officials to discuss both fire and, um, and, and some other folks on, potential plan that's going to be coming forward for the planning board. Uh, be looking at doing, uh, or an earth removal project tied with a, uh, future proposed plan, um, that they haven't definitively defined yet, but what I'm thinking is probably going to be along the lines of something under the, uh, uh, fifty-five and over bylaw, um, the age restricted bylaw, and, you know, I think, my experience, um, we haven't done a lot of, uh, work with Terry Edwards, who is the owner of TL Edwards out of Avon, Mass. Um, but I know Terry very well. Um, I know his company very well. He also owns, uh, the old, the, the law, um, both a, a asphalt plant in Avon, as well as, uh, Plymouth on forty-four, Plimpton, um, the Laid Law site, and he's just, he's, uh, a major, major player in, uh, in Massachusetts and particularly in the, paving and infrastructure and knows what he's doing. He's partnered with, um, Howard Bailey, a local developer. Um, and, you know, they're looking at their project, uh, moving forward in the next few weeks to at least file an application with planning board and, and, seeking, uh, permits and all of that for earth removal as part of a future project. So, um, as you know, the town's, uh, initial assessment has been, you know, hugely impactful. But one of the exciting things when, um, it, the auction was won by Terry Edwards is I knew that the project wouldn't sit, and it wouldn't be something that would just be sort of, you know, mined and left. Um, you know, get the fact that he won that auction, uh, I think is a good thing for the town because he does have the experience to do the project. Um, and working with, uh, Howard Bailey and, and that team, um, they've done a lot of gravel operations. They've done a lot of earth removal. Um, you know, so I think, uh, you know, obviously we're going to, if that moves forward, we've had a lot of, conversations around truck traffic and, you know, there'll be some impacts, um, you know, for the next twenty-four months, um. Fortunately, I would say ninety percent of the material that, you know, would be removed is going to the highway, coming out, going left. Um, if some others had won the auction, likely would be coming down through the center of town, through Millet's probably. Um, so I would say the majority, other than maybe some local, um, sand, uh, needs and some local stuff. Uh, I'd say ninety percent or more of the project will be going out on the highway, um, heading out to his own facilities and, and the like. So, more to come on that. I just want to let you know that, that there has been conversations and, um, you know, we're certainly, um, you know, it having, providing technical assistance in the sense of, uh, you know, expectations of the town. As that progresses, the expectations are obviously around dust control, traffic impacts, and those things will be future and, and more honed in on, but, um, there is movement there. Um, obviously the, the, the surge of that over three million dollars back to the town, uh, ultimately the final project, uh, whatever it does post, uh, post-removal get built, you know, we can now have a significant parcel just under eighteen acres that's back on the tax roll. So, um, happy to answer any of the questions. That's all I have this evening.
No, I have no questions. Select Board Member Gallo.
No questions.
Select Board Member Harrington.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Select Board Member Rouse.
All set. Thank you.
I, I'd be remiss if I didn't let everybody know our fire chief, Antonio Marino, is with us this evening. Thank you, Tony, for being with us. Uh, do you have anything for us?
Uh, no, not at this time. Uh, glad that, uh, yeah, glad that we have some of the, uh, major projects, uh, in front of us and, and be able to, uh, hopefully have good discussions about, you know, the needs for, for more capital, uh, replacement of apparatus, so on and so forth. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all the, the residents who came out. I know we went from, uh, I had two pages of people on my screen down to one. I want to thank you all for joining us and, uh, you know, in, in hearing us out. Uh, hopefully, uh, lots of you stayed, so you enjoyed the meeting, which is good. We love having an audience. Uh, in the absence of, uh, Select Board Member Anderson, I'm going to ask Select Board Member Rouse.
Oh. Wow.
Don't blow it. Don't blow it.
I know, feeling the pressure. What does Jim say? I make a motion to adjourn tonight's Board of Selectment meeting. Will that be sufficient?
We'll let it slide.
So moved.
By Select Board Member Rouse, seconded by Select Board Member Gallo. We'll do a roll call vote. Select Board Member Bottash, yes. Select Board Member Gallo.
Gallo, yes.
Select Board Member Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Select Board Member Rouse.
Yes.
All right. I think that was your first motion that you've made.
No, it isn't, Joe. Your memory is not too sharp. I have made a lot of motions. I have made a lot of motions and I have seconded a lot of emotion, emotions here on this, on these meetings.
Now she's going to be making a lot more.
Yeah, watch out.
A lot of emotions.
You poke the bear. Watch out.
Yeah, poking the bear.
All right.
Bye, bye, guys. Queen church.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.